Okay. Good evening, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals for January tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Tonight, we are continuing the hearing for the forty B project at Park Central. So. Mr. Panos, you want to begin or?
Yes, good evening, members of the board. My name is Jason Panos, practicing law at two four six Andover Street, Kibbity, Massachusetts. This meeting follows our meeting of November twenty-ninth, Happy New Year. And where we discussed the matter of the pending litigation at the land court regarding the agreement and adjudication of property rights pursuant to it. And the board came up with three options, which I summarized in a letter I've just submitted to the board for our consideration, and we took that time to delve into the options, which I summarize as follows. Number one, not in any particular order, but number one, to deny the application without prejudice to the applicant, to refile with the board after the conclusion of the land court case on the agreement. Number two, to stay the pendency of the board's hearings pending the conclusion of the land court hearing, the so-called abeyance option. Or three, reform the application filing to conform with the requirements and restrictions of the agreement, in which case the board would continue its hearings on the amended application. Before I go any further, litigation counsel prepared a very short report that I'm going to read into the record as to the status of that litigation. And I think that will help you help inform why we've chosen or prefer a specific course of action. So the court is aware that we're having this hearing tonight, at which the board will decide how it will proceed with the application, including to put the application in abeyance until the court decides the properties, party's property rights. The court, in fact, has put the action on what seems to be a fast track in light of tonight's hearing, with all discovery to be done by the end of June, and all parties to report trial readiness in July. So if you, that's the crib notes version. If you want a more comprehensive report, you can go on the land court docket yourself and you can see the order. But on June twenty-eighth of this year, discovery is to be complete. So by the end of by, by the end of June. And that is fairly quick. That means all depositions in the matter have to be called, all paper discovery, everything has to be wrapped up. By July eleventh, council will file a joint report confirming that discovery is complete, advising as to whether any party intends to file a dispositive motion and the basis therefore. Whether a pre-trial conference should be scheduled, prospects for settlement or mediation, and advising of any other matters necessitating the court's attention, status conference scheduled for July eighteenth. So this litigation is happening on a fairly quick progress plane. Back to my letter, we think in light of that that it makes sense to just stay the, the, the board's hearing until the matter is concluded with the land court. Whether that conclusion is arrived at by negotiation of the parties or in the natural course of the litigation. Now, we can't keep a a matter continued indefinitely, so I propose coming back here. Or depending on the status of the litigation at that time, through letters seeking further continuances, if, if necessary and appropriate. But coming back here on April third, that should give us a better sense on where things are going with the litigation. And if they're still in the same place, then we can always continue even further for another three months. But on, on, until the matter is concluded over in Boston at the land court, I, I think three month increments is probably probably appropriate, but I think a wait and see approach is maybe best, but at least in this first instance, April third. And then I've asked through the letter that the hundred and eighty days be commensurately extended out. So right now at April third, we would be extending out with the past continuance and extension of the hundred and eighty day period that, that we agreed to on November twenty-ninth, which pushes that date out to May twenty-first. The additional, I believe, eighty-four days would bring it out to August fourteenth at this moment. And we would, of course, agree to continue to push out that hundred and eighty days as, as further continuances necessitate. So that's our proposal and request to the board.
Okay. Jay, do you have any comment on that?
We certainly invited that, that, that kind of in-between approach to it, I think, three months. Sorry.
I think three months is is about the right time for a check-in. We can get some, a status report from them, or if they're kind of in still not far along, they'll make another request, but I think that's a fair approach to it.
Okay. Just one administrative matter. I don't think we could act, we could physically do April third necessarily. You think, or? You think we can?
Yeah, it's the first Wednesday of the month.
Okay, all right, all right. I just wanted to make sure that we're not the other part, there's the, the locus, and then there's the people.
That's, that's what I tried to track was that first Wednesday of the month. Been conducting your meetings. If we need to do it, I'm happy to do that. Knowing that we have to do the process.
Just look real quick. I find it highly unlikely I'd have a problem, but. Yeah, I, I think that's fine. Okay. Yeah, I just, before we, we get to agreeing to something, I think it's important to get that clear first.
And if anything significant happens before then, I'll, I'll certainly be in contact with Attorney Tellerman and let him know what to expect, obviously, if the matter settles or
Okay.
whatever.
All right. I don't know if it's, if there's anything else you wanted to discuss at this time. Okay, all right. I mean, myself, I'm kind of actually curious. I know one of the options was to reform the application, and that's a lot of work, and maybe we should just hold off on that discussion until later time. But that's, to me, that's the first question that comes to mind is, you know, you could just simply conform and it will be interesting to know why you didn't want to go down that path.
It doesn't necessarily put the litigation away.
Okay.
Litigation had two components, and it doesn't get the board necessarily to where you want it to be when you have the concern, concern about the agreement anyway, which is to put away the uncertainty.
Okay.
There are two components to the litigation as we see it. There is the matter, and, and you know this because you've called it out. I think it formed the basis of where the board was heading, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but where the board was heading when it, when it came up with the, this kind of three option potential solution. Obviously, there were restrictions in that agreement about access to rights of way. But there was also the matter of whether the, the application is properly before the board, whether the matter, whether the agreement was properly terminated or needed to be terminated. And that does not get get taken care of by reforming the plans.
Okay.
So the land court litigation would still be out there potentially.
Okay.
And so we just felt that, given how quickly the land court is proceeding on this, that it just made sense to kind of sit back and wait.
Okay.
Because one way or another, I think we're going to probably get a fairly quick decision.
Okay.
Again, either through negotiation, and, and I'm not involved in those discussions.
Right.
That's being handled by separate counsel or through full adjudication of property rights per the agreement through the land court. I mean, we could have a trial on this as early as before the conclusion of summer. At the, at the clip this is going.
Right, okay.
So it seems to me before going through the time and expense of reforming plans that might not get the board and us to a comfort level that it's going to set aside the question mark of the litigation, let's wait.
Okay, all right.
That's, that's the thinking.
Yeah, and I, I mean, as curious as I am, I think it probably makes sense to, to table all that and allow, again, similar to what I've said in a different hearing, hopefully, there are some discussions and negotiations to try to get to an agreeable place. It's better for everybody if you can do that, but
Sure.
it's not for any of us to say at this point.
Sure.
Basically, on what you're, what you're proposing here. So first of all, I don't know if anybody on the board has any questions or comments regarding the proposal. It seems pretty straightforward. Okay.
I don't have any questions. It's straightforward.
Okay, Doug?
I have no, I have no questions with the proposal. I'm just curious, what is, I know we extended this twice in the public hearing time with a hundred and eighty days twice. What is our net number left, though? Do we burn any of the hundred and eighty days already?
I, I believe we did, just from the for the first, for, between the, the first and the second, so.
How many days was, it wasn't that many, right?
No, it's, it's not.
Yeah, I was curious, but
Yeah. Yeah. Good question.
Yeah, but just so we, more for us to know when we come back.
Let, let, let's put it. Yeah, let's put it this way. If we commenced on the merits in April and we had until August to complete it, that would be plenty of time in, in, in my experience to
Okay.
you know, provided there was good cooperation on peer review and everything else.
Right, right, and we already, you know.
Yep, we're already down.
Engaged on peer review, so. But I mean, not, not that it's going on, but we've at least reached out, so, okay.
Just to give you an idea of the timeline, if you want to do your own calculation, we opened this hearing on October eighteenth.
It sounds right.
We continued it to November twenty-ninth. From November twenty-ninth is when we started staying the hundred and eighty days. So you've eaten through two months, give or take.
Okay. I don't know, I, I, I would allow, I don't know if anybody, anybody from the public or another board has anything they want to ask or raise.
John Green, Ten Terror Road. So just talking about these days. How's it beneficial to the town to keep this open at all? Shouldn't we close it? Shouldn't they be reapplying to mass housing, going through the process again? I, I just don't understand why. You know, obviously, there's something in land court that is holding this up. This probably shouldn't have been before the board to begin with, so it never should have kicked off. So why is this going to still be open? And why are we kicking the can down the road, worried about days? This should be closed. They should reapply, should start over.
Okay.
Mimi Latrell, I'm the chair of the planning board, but I'm speaking as a resident because we haven't discussed this. I'm just wondering what this means as to safe harbor. We have other, one other forty B before your board and potentially another one coming. If we reach safe harbor prior to this continuance, what happens?
I mean, I can, I can address that question. So it's a good, really good question, Mimi. It probably would be a distinction without a difference. So if this project was denied today on, for the grounds that we've already stated, I, almost guaranteeing there would be an appeal. That appeal holds their place in line under the safe harbor. Given how long those processes take at the Housing Appeals Committee and then subsequent, in subsequent forums, they wouldn't lose their place in line at any point in, in time. So it, it ends up being not much of a difference either way in terms of safe harbor. If we met a safe harbor with any of the other projects that are in the pipeline or proposed to be in the pipeline, then it ends up being a little bit of gravy. Now, to the extent that the prevailing party in the litigation is not the applicant, and it results in an impossible situation for this project to move forward, there's a lot of gray area in between and other possibilities. Then at that point, that safe harbor would would be applicable if this project had to go away. But those are all future events. But it's a really good question because it's thing, that's something that we've certainly talked about here.
Thank you very much.
Jay, quick question. It's my understanding, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but not only would the, let's just say, one of the forty B projects get approved, but the, the safe, the, the, the units wouldn't go be applied to the affordable housing stock until the certificate of occupancy for each unit.
Actually, under forty B, and this was kind of a concession to towns probably fifteen years ago or so, the units count on the day they're approved, provide and stay on the count so long as there's a building permit within twelve months. And then occupancy following that, there's other time periods here, but we, we get an immediate kick from that. Yep.
Hi, Benjamin Timon. My office address is one Boston Place in Boston, and I represent four of the butter families, the Whitneys, the Grays, the Boydens, and the Woo's. And Mr. Whitney and Mr. Gray are here this evening. I just wanted to make two quick points. I think that the point that was just made about safe harbor is Attorney Talman just said is, is actually a really astute one, and one thing I would just put out there for the board's consideration is, is the precedent of situations where an applicant can come in and submit a comprehensive permit application in order to grandfather themselves and sort of freeze the safe harbor process, and then, you know, seek the kind of open-ended continuance or abeyance that this applicant is seeking. I think as a policy matter, it may be something that the board wants to think about, because I don't think that's really how the, the, the the process is supposed to work, even though there are unusual circumstances here. And then the second point I would make is that my four clients, and I know that there's another, some other signatories to the twenty fifteen agreement as well, they're, you know, they're paying lawyers to attend all of these different proceedings on an agreement that they thought would be honored and that they thought ended this whole situation years ago. And so I represent those four families at the land court. I represent them here. And even though if you follow the course of action that Attorney Panos has recommended, you know, there's going to be an April status conference and so on, and maybe it's a short thing and checking in. But my clients are, you know, are paying legal fees that they really shouldn't have to pay. And to be able to simplify things to just one active process, i.e. the land court, I think I can fairly say would be my client's preference. So that's, I just wanted to put that out there for your consideration. My client's preference would be that there be, that option one be followed, which would be the dismissal of this particular application and allow the applicant to come back if they're in a position to do that after the land court. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just comment? And I think that this helps on the, the, the first comment as well. If, I feel strongly about our, the board's original interpretation, but that's, that's one factual kind of conclusion that the board made in terms of their interpretation of these agreements. If the prior agreements, restrictions, covenants between the neighbors and the applicant were so clear as to, and I think this was part of our thinking, was so clear as to have a clear winner and a loser in, in the competing interpretations, and this would be a summary judgment case in land court. The fact that it appears to be heading headlong to a trial on exactly what certain of those ambiguous terms means, means that our approach of not wanting to wade into third-party property disputes is probably a smart one. All that said, and in a nod to everyone, this is a three-month. The board may see some status changing elsewhere in the, in, in the litigation or otherwise, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss again in three months. I think it's a, it's a good breather. Let them see what they can do. Maybe they come up with an agreement. And then we can figure out where we're going from there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm in agreement. I, I hear what's, what's being said about reapplying, but to me, I, I think I agree that the, the, the three-month stay makes sense to me. I don't know how anybody else on the board feels.
So I'm hearing that the neighbors would like us to deny the application tonight and start over. I just have some reservations where it's going to get us. And then the placeholder, I sensed about the placeholder that we're kicking the can, but then they haven't had the process. Land court problems in, in front of it. I would like to know how other board members feel about denying this application versus allowing it to.
Okay.
A bit on the fence.
Oh, I mean, the, the one thing I did want to actually address from the attorney regarding precedence, I know in a, in a different hearing there was a concern raised, nothing related to this, where people worried about precedence. And I think it's a very, you know, technical, legal, or political term, but I really don't see that applying because it is unusual, and just because we have the circumstances that apply here, where a covenant has been agreed to, and we're waiting on land court, that doesn't mean that anybody can come in here and say, well, hey, we can, we can cite this, even though we have nothing similar to that going on as a precedence. I just, I don't buy that. It was, that was brought up in a separate hearing, and I didn't, I didn't buy it then either. So that's just my response as far as the precedence goes. Regarding I, I, I guess I tend to follow what Mr. Talman said. I, I, I think that the three-month stay makes sense. Doug, do you have an opinion?
You know, I'm not a fan of starting another legal process while one legal process is going on, right? So for us to deny, it's going to create another legal process. And and although I think there's very little risk potentially for that, they're still going to housing appeals, right? So the idea is we deny for jurisdictional reasons, right, to see if they can even be before us. So I feel like we're creating a second legal process that may not be necessary at the same time. So again, I'm, I'm still frustrated that the, the case is here in general, right? So, and I feel like we're being put into a difficult situation, just overall.
Here, here's what I would predict too, it, just kind of spin it forward and taking aside the, the notion of funding further legal action on, on the town. We deny for the, the grounds that we've talked about, which we feel strongly about, and I think we all do. They appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. Just in a, an assumption would be that there'd be a motion to stay at the Housing Appeals Committee until they resolve. The Housing Appeals Committee doesn't want to wade into a dispute that a court with a higher degree of jurisdiction, so to speak, it is is already weighted into. I, I think we'd be exactly where we are now with just different, a different forum, different players perhaps. Here, I think we do control our own destiny a little bit too. Now, I'm not suggesting that the door just stay open forever. But in terms of risks and benefits, in terms of having the ability to control the narrative for as long as possible on these forty B projects, which it can be difficult in all circumstances, I think it makes some sense. There are guidelines from the state to try and work things out during the process. I don't think if they ask for six months or nine months, I'd probably say, let's have a check-in anyway in, in that time period. So I, I think it's a wise move that said if the board felt, the majority of the board felt that they wanted to go with option one, then, you know, I hundred percent support it. I think there's merit to it. Just, I'm just not sure the, there's any practical effect to it that's a, would yield positive benefits for the town right now.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I'm stuck in a little bit of that as well. I mean, I'm still the clear and, to me, unambiguous reading of the covenant is, is clear that it restricts applications. So I feel I feel like that's unambiguous. So it's frustrating that petition was brought and that we're here, but I think the reality is it's either we kind of hold our nose and at least have some semblance of control over this. And I understand, being an attorney myself, having clients have to pay to have counsel present. Trust me, I get that. At the same time, I don't think what's being asked for is so unreasonable. I, I, I too was surprised that this passed summary judgment. Again, I didn't read the arguments. I've got a busy practice, so I didn't have the time to, to, to read the arguments of counsel, but it doesn't matter.
It's not, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, but there is no summary judgment here.
No, that's what I mean.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
The, whether or not there will be summary judgment is an open question.
Certain, right.
That hasn't come up. We're still, we're in paper discovery, and so summary judgment would be premature.
Absolutely.
And it may be that we do file for summary judgment.
Certainly, okay, but I just, I just feel that, given the circumstances. Okay. I don't, we, I don't think we have good options. So what's, what's the least harmful, bad option? Okay. Well, if there isn't any other public make the motion to close the public hearing?
No, no.
We can't.
And you have to, we have to continue. Unless you want to. Welcome to.
Yeah, exactly.
Do that.
You might regret it.
Any more public comments.
Yeah, 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 exactly. But yeah, I, that's, that's what I was going to suggest is that why don't we, we make the motion to continue the hearing until April third, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Good. Motion to continue to April third, twenty twenty-four has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Doug?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike? Williams, aye. Okay. Very much. We'll continue it until April third, twenty twenty-four.
Excellent. And as I said, if anything significant happens between now and then, I'll be in touch with Jay.
Okay.
In a way.
Okay, all right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only, the only thing we have on those minutes.
I actually read those.
I read the minutes to overlap.
Is that a good thing or about that?
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Yeah, you, you did a bunch, yeah.
Yeah. Good job.
I, yeah, just, I, I did too. I read them. I actually read.
Yeah. I love the candor, like, I, I.
It was, it was pretty, it was pretty impressive. Capturing everything.
I, yeah, oh, she, that's, that's part of it. I know she does a very good job capturing. I actually came back to her today with a couple of minor, I mean, very minor titles.
At which I could watch my journey.
Did you, did you see those or no? You out, Jay? Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good drive.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
Yes.
Okay, the roads are still a mess.
Okay, actually.
Oh, yeah?
Actually, it took me a little bit of time. I, I budgeted about an hour and a half to get out here.
Quincy, you can't get there from here.
Pivety.
Oh, pivety.
Like you are off a high.
Yeah, 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 that's true.
One, one twenty-eight, one fourteen.
Yeah.
And I, it wasn't until I hit Route Nine that I ran into a little but one twenty-eight was, and the pipe was vital.
Yeah.
Usually when it's raining and bad weather, people freak out.
They forget I'm driving.
Oh, yesterday.
Yesterday afternoon.
Yeah.
What's that?
You gotta fix that.
They gotta fix that.
I know. Well, it 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 always happens, um, you know, when we're at the very beginning of it, but at the end of a I fill up easily, you know, and up to tiny. And I tried to, I tried to do as much electronic as I can, you know, I I need to refer the papers.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I like.
So besides the typo. Yeah, well, well, how did, was I, was I right on the present versus?
Yeah.
Present, yeah, okay.
Yeah, you were, um, yeah, I read that and I was like, oh, that doesn't make sense.
I don't think that's what, the situation is so close, yeah.
Yeah, no, so I fixed those, and then I found another typo, very, very person.
Did you really?
Yeah, well, not a typo, but um, where I lifted the representative for the applicant.
Oh, okay.
Um, I just wrote, I wrote company instead of the actual company, so I picked that.
That one slid right by.
I'm even embarrassed to point it, I only have one minor, minor comment.
Yes.
Page four, last paragraph.
Okay.
My name is with an S with as opposed to a Z.
Oh.
But just, but I think you put that in just to make sure we were reading it, that's what I really believe.
You know, yes, I like that.
There's a couple intentional.
Like an Easter egg, right?
Keep you on your toes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was it, everything else was great.
Okay.
Doris, you're okay with it?
Well, I had this one comment.
Yes.
I'm on page four.
Okay.
Page four, last sentence, it says, um, and I didn't know if this was accurate, they said, I stated, just check my, I'm gonna get scrolls in the YouTube. She said that they stated the board granted a special permit on the parking for extending thirty feet in the residential zone.
Can I stop you? It's the wrong meeting.
Oh.
I'm so sorry.
That's next week.
I know, so. I thought.
This is the minutes from the previous meeting.
Okay, yeah.
And I'm not sure, um, we gave up the special for for the, um, we can't really discuss it, but the special permit was, that that's actually accurate.
Okay, can you, can you send it in an email? And I'll, I'll check it.
She stated that, so she stated, the board grant a special permit on the parking lot for thirty feet into the residential zone, but then a parking lot, I said that, blah, 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 but the question was, I don't know if they actually had a special permit.
But but so regarding the the November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three minutes, did you have any concerns?
More and I would discuss it, I there were.
Right, but but.
That can't do.
No, let's let's not talk about it here, you can say, you can send an email about that.
Okay, fine.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah, but that.
You had asked me for a minute, but you had responded to the email for next week, so I thought you needed the ones from next week.
It's okay, it's a whole other, I can just give you an email.
Yes, yeah, send me an email.
I don't have the right minutes in front of me.
Well.
That was fine with those, but I just read those.
Okay, all right, all right, so we're generally with the the minor.
With the amendment.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Marshall, to approve the minutes as drafted.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve has been made with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, opposed, nay, Doug?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye.
All right.
Okay, uh, we didn't have anything, oh, um, we want to, we don't have to talk, we don't have to talk about. Yes, we do, another meeting.
It's 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 a great.
That's right. Oh, no, no. Oh, it's, we got Winter Street.
Yeah, Winter Street and one twenty, uh, two fifty.
Two fifty, yeah, okay.
And that's here.
Okay.
That meeting's here.
Yeah.
It is.
Next week.
Next week is here.
We're live again.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're all technically on the streets, so it's. All right, for me to get out.
Big for you, yeah.
Sorry, honey. I gotta get there early and stay late. Thank God she's not watching.
It's recording.
It's gonna be on YouTube forever.
If I was explaining whether it's very true, she would not watch it, she would be like, yeah, it's not.
That's bad.
But, yeah, so we didn't, there was nothing else on the agenda.
There was nothing else on the agenda?
Okay, I learned I need to check reviews, all right. Um, we don't have Paul here this evening, so somebody else, somebody else has to make the motion.
Second, oh, sorry.
Oh, there we go, motion to adjourn has been made with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, opposed, nay, Doug?
Aye.
Doris? Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye.
All right.
Very good, thank you very much, that adjourns the meeting. We're going to the margaritas, right?